Welcome, everybody. If you could take your seats, we're going to go ahead and get started and make sure we're respectful of your time tonight. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us. My name is Greg Summerhaze. I'm the president of the South Valley Chamber. We're a little newer chamber. We used to be the Sandy Chamber of Commerce, and we have now joined together with Riverton and Draper to offer a more regional Chamber of Commerce. And we are super excited to be in your city tonight and to learn more about the issues going on. And we want to start off by thanking our candidates for, first of all, running for office. Thank you for putting yourselves out there and trying to get involved in the community and make it a better place. And thank you for being here tonight to help the citizens learn a little bit more about you. But before I go any further, I just want to thank the team here at Riverton City for putting this together, Mayor Staggs and his team. Let's give them a round of applause to start off. And now I'm going to turn the time over to Mayor Staggs to say a few words, and then I will introduce Brian Scott, our moderator for the night.
I'll be quick. You kind of put me on the spot. No, I'm kidding. I just want to thank both the Chamber and the City Journals for hosting this event. I think it's fantastic here. We have some really good candidates, too. We're blessed to have that. It's been some time since we've even had a primary, I think, in some districts, and this year we had a few. So this is great. It's always good to have a number of candidates. I mean, one of the things the city has attempted to do is really try to engage and inform residents, much more so. We have a number of volunteer committees. We've tried to extend opportunities for residents to be much more engaged and involved in the community. And I think those that are willing to actually put their name on a ballot, that is a very high level or gauge of community involvement. So thank you guys for, everybody for running for office here. It's fantastic. I'll go ahead and turn it right back over to Greg. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Brian. Brian Scott's going to be our moderator tonight with City Journals, and they've partnered with us on these debates. So we appreciate Brian for taking the time to be here. And he's going to sort of explain a little bit about how the night will go, and then we'll go from there.
Perfect. Thank you. And I thank the South Valley Chamber for putting this on and inviting us to come out here and be with you guys tonight. So the general format, it's not really a debate, but the opportunity for each one of the candidates to propose their point of views and share. And we'll give you three minutes to do that first round. And then following that, we'll shorten that up because of how many people we have here and that we don't have a ton of questions. We'll probably give you around two minutes to answer each question. And I'll have the timer up here, and I'll time you, and I'll just hold my hand up when you've hit the time. And we'll go until we're out of questions or we're out of time. So I think we have about an hour to get going. As I ask the questions, I'll start with Tracy, and I'll come down to Stephen, and then the next question, I'll start with Stephen and go back to Tracy. Any questions? Perfect. Well, welcome. So Tracy, three minutes. Just give us an introduction of who you are.
I am Tracy Halverson, and I think I've been out there pretty much. People know why I'm running. But I wanted to stay and leave you guys with one message about me. And if I could leave that message with you as you leave today, is that I'm actually running for us. I'm running to be your voice. When we feel our voices don't matter, that decisions are already made even before we get to voice our opinion, then our system is broken. When our city is being led by developers and we're being told that we cannot have the city that we want, then our system is broken. If we are still hearing that people aren't aware when changes are being made or our city plans and ordinances, then our system is broken. And as your city council representative, I will champion for transparency. I will advocate for clear and easy communication. And instead of when the developers are calling me at home, I will be reaching out to you to make sure we are ensuring and building a community together. And I look forward to serving you as your council representative.
That's me, Brian. All right. I'm Troy McDougall. Married, lived here in Riverton for 25 years, where we've raised our six children. I've got three left in high school. Moved out here, and my original contact with Riverton was as a 10-year-old boy, Buck and Haye, buying the high school. So I've seen Riverton when it was agricultural, when it was rural, and it was one of the main reasons why my wife and I moved out here 25 years ago, was to kind of enjoy that environment. My background is, got a lot of variety to it. So I spent about 15 years in the real estate industry, and then a couple of years in investment finance. And currently, the last 10 years, I've been teaching. Last 10 years, I've been teaching over at Riverton High School and coaching football over there for the last five. So from the beginning, I've always been involved with Riverton City and involved in different issues over the years, either volunteering for the schools or working with city representatives way back when Sandra Lloyd was our mayor, and working through all the different mayors since then. I've been involved in some of the different projects that have taken place in our city also. So one of the advantages, I believe, I have that make me a good candidate for this is just that background. The ability to understand real estate, to understand development, understand what they're looking for, understand how financing takes place, whether it's bonding or land usage, as well as the connection to the community, to be able to make sure that existing homeowners' property rights are respected, that as new things change and grow, we respect those who've already come here. I love living in Riverton. I think we've had a lot of great changes that have taken place here in the city, and we're moving in a great direction. I just want to continue that growth and hope that Riverton continues to be the place where, frankly, my wife and I are planning on retiring. So that was my motivation for running. In the years past, I've been involved and look forward to representing you in all those different issues. There's a lot of complicated issues that come up, and being able to understand it from all different sides is critically important, that we see the different perspectives that impact the decisions that our city politicians make.
Claude?
So we have a little more time than I thought, so I'm going to start off by just telling you that I have five kids and three grandkids, and all of them live in the area. And the biggest reason I wanted to run is just to shape the future of Riverton for ourselves and our children. We live on Lover's Lane. If you don't know where that is, that's on the east side of the city, towards the water plant. I am running, obviously, in District Number Five. And the thing I really believe that I want to continue is transparent communication. You know, I do a lot of social media. I really want to communicate to the people of Riverton on what's going on. I think our mayor's done a pretty good job about that with Mayor's Minute and other things that he does. I, too, get involved with the community. I've done a lot of community car shows, a lot of other events. We do a lot of volunteer service. And that's how I got involved, actually, was I was involved behind the scenes before I thought about running. And I'm in a position right now, because I'm self-employed, I have no, I have absolutely no conflicts of interest. I can go to water conferences during the day. Just went to a meeting at 4:00 that was about water. A lot of people can't do that, but I take every opportunity I can. Last week, I was at the fire department. I do everything I can to try to be involved in the city. So I'm actually going to talk a little bit about my experience and why I think I'm a good candidate. I have upper-level management experience in five different industries: aerospace, high technology, medical, construction, and investment industries. I've been all the way from the bottom of the company to the top of the company, so I've had to manage some pretty big budgets and manage a lot of people. As a citizen council candidate in my district, I've already been able to make a difference without being a councilman. Now, a couple of the things that I've been able to be involved with, along with city leaders and residents, is that I got involved in the water district. They had an issue there where they were going to put in, basically, some silos. That's the next stage in expanding the plant. And I was able to get that stopped and keep it at 35 feet. And that's something I didn't do alone, but I got involved and got the right city leaders involved, and we were able to stop that. Same thing with Redwood Road on the ranch road development. We had high-density housing that was being proposed in there, and that was something we also got stopped until the general plan could be completed. So now the citizens can weigh in on that and say, what do they want Redwood Road to look like? I believe my experience in education, business, my relationships that I've already established with city leaders, and my flexibility make me a good candidate for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
Well, thanks, everybody, for letting us come here tonight. That's very important. Most of you probably have heard my, seen my flyers and heard my statements on Facebook. I've been 27 years in Riverton. I raised my entire family here. They're all raised, and we only have one child left in the home. And I think she lives there. Someone sneaks in in the night and leaves sometime during the day, so I'm not quite sure, but I think somebody lives there. Having said that, I've been here when we didn't have secondary water. And when they put the secondary water system, I was intimately involved with that, hearing that. One of my assignments was, oddly enough, was I went around their neighborhood and showed everybody how to hook it up. Had it on a board, piece of plywood. We went around and showed everybody. And subsequently, when I thought I was trying to educate them, ended up just doing most of the work. It was easier than trying to educate them on that. I was also involved when they were talking about the park and the heat, the heated debate over the park when it came in here. I remember our mayor was running. That was one of his issues that he was running with. So, and that was part of the issue there. I was intimately involved with that. Most recently, I've had great involvement with our police department, Riverton City Former Home Police Department. And that's kind of where I sit at this very point, is that I was involved with that and developing that and crunching the numbers, putting it together, making sure we could happen. And that's where my strong point comes in. I got 34 years of law enforcement experience, 34 years of government experience, and that experience now is being here with us, and I want to share that experience with you folks. Also during that time of 34 years, as very much so like Claude, I've had the opportunity to crunch the budget. I've had the opportunity to negotiate salaries for the police officers. I've had the opportunity to be part of the termination of police officers when that happens, as well as hiring them, as well as purchasing the cars, as well as understanding where all those funds have to come from. Where the real strong point comes in is that it's not necessarily what we're doing today. It's what we need to do in five years from now. And if we look at the numbers, how much Riverton has grown over the last 30 years, where's it going to be in five years? And where do we need to be in five years? We need to be there so we can serve the public, so we can serve the residents here. But we also need to be there in reference to paying for it. And what I'm hoping to bring there is a wisdom that says, when we need the dollars and the cents, we already have them because we knew we needed it in the first place. It's no different, the city should be treated no different than each and every one of you have to treat your budgets at home. If you have a budget at home, you know how much you can spend. You know you've had those times when you've told your significant other, we can't go to dinner this week. Everybody's experienced that, and we need to behave the same way on the council. We need to say, we need to pull back the reins, we need to save the money when it's necessary. And that's what I bring to the city right now, and that's my quest, to be your city councilman, and that's what I bring there. Thank you.
Thank you all for representing the time limits that were given to you. So the first question, many of you actually, I think, maybe all of you talked a little bit about transparency. And this question, I think, speaks very, very much into that. If you elected as a city councilperson, you will represent a certain group of residents. How will you create more transparency as you represent those residents? And then we'll start with you, Stephen, on this question.
Okay. Well, I think, as Claude mentioned, I think the mayor and the council are doing a great job in reference to that. They've exposed themselves and allowed people to talk to them and stuff like this. What I probably would like to add to that would be more like a blog or something there when anything's happening. So maybe when you go on the webpage, you could see hot topics, issues that are going on, what's happening, what's being said, and allow everybody to chime in. Because it's all so often that people can't come here tonight. This room holds 100 people, maybe a little more, and the city's well over 40,000 people and we're not in field. So the reality is, is that when you let people know what's going on, allow them to chime in and tell you what's going on and what they want to see, then we can make sound decisions. So it affects everybody, so we have a knowledge base. So I would obviously say that I would support something like that. Obviously, we have Facebook pages, we have email, we have phones, we have that. That's one of the things I have done over my 34 years, and trust me, my family can contest that my phone goes off all hours, and it's often that I'm answering that call late at night. Okay? Something's happened, I need to address it. Don't dodge the phone. Don't dodge your emails, answer them. And try to understand where people are coming from, but make sure you can educate them so they know what we're doing, trying to achieve.
Claude?
So there's a lot of different ways to be okay that I'm already using. I've already set up an email subscription. When people go on my website, they can see drive so that they can be notified if you're helping the city. I also encourage people to use Riverton Now. That's the place that you can go on your app. The city's done a really good job with that.
Can you all hear me now? I apologize. So there's actually a system that we tried to use called Mentimeter, and we did it at the last public opinion meeting that we had here in this chamber on Redwood Road. And it worked very well. It's cloud-based software that actually, you can interact on your phone. You could be sitting there right there on your phone. You'll see a bunch of questions up there that'll ask you. You get to go in there and weigh in. And it was very successful. People liked it. That was a good way to communicate to people and then get their opinion of what they'd like to see developed on Redwood Road, for an example. I've already set up a website. You can get a lot of information on there. I actually post to it often. I have a separate Facebook page that also goes right to my website. So I already have a lot of different ways that I communicate that are already set up that I won't need to set up once I'm elected. I'm already doing it. And of course, the most important thing is to get out and talk to people personally and find out what their issues are. And I can even tell you more about that. I jumped on a bus today just to do some research on transportation. I was at a water meeting at 4:00. I was at a water conservation meeting last week, or a few weeks back, and I communicate that information to people. So everything I do, I'm very transparent. I'll continue to be transparent, and I use all the different methods that are out there to communicate to people.
Thank you. Troy?
So, just as been explained, social media has become a great opportunity for keeping citizens informed, and I think Riverton City's done a great job leading that, whether it's the ability to watch the actual city council meetings online, newsletters, webpage, Facebook page. We have all those tools out there that people can access the information of what's going on to the city. Two things I believe I can add to, as many have spoken about, is accessibility. Most of the time, what we don't have, a lot of times, is the details of why decisions are being made, or what the details are in a specific issue. And so my main role is to do the research, the groundwork, and get you the factual information about what decisions are going on. That way, many times, we just don't know what the specifics are of, for example, you know, secondary water metering. We've had some changes that have happened there. Some of that's because the state has mandated some issues there. Many of the citizens have no clue the secondary water metering's taking place. I'll do the research and make sure that you're informed of who's driving what decisions and what decisions are going to impact us directly. I think that's the information that people need. So then, when they make a decision, when they're communicating back to me, it's an informed decision with all the information. And then they can say, yeah, I understand now what the big issue is here, and that's why I have the stance I have. So accessibility is critical, but doing the research and making sure people have the factual information on whatever that issue is, I think is just as important.
Thank you. Tracy?
I think since I declared my candidacy, you can tell what kind of representative I will be in communication. I am attending meetings. I'm looking into the issues, and I'm posting it, and I'm asking for feedback. I'm getting feedback. I know the city has a lot of tools. They have a city app, they have email, they have text messaging now. And I think they could be used to, they're more full potential, because I think, yeah, we get a lot of communication about events, but there's really no transparency to what city issues are going on. I will encourage transparency even when you list an agenda item. For example, an agenda item that just says, "proposed rezone ordinance." It needs further detail of what it is, what are you reviewing. Transparency begins with the city staff as well, and as a leader, we should be encouraging that and giving all the information to our citizens. More communication means more transparency, and it holds you accountable. It also involves input from residents. When you have input from residents, you will end up with a better result because you're addressing the most concerns and the most issues and meeting those needs.
Thank you. This is a little bit longer question. If we get in the middle and someone wants me to restate the question, I'd be happy to. A visioning study was recently commissioned for the southwestern part of the valley, consisting of six municipalities. The results of that study could influence policy decisions going forward for Riverton land use, transportation, roads, et cetera. What is your vision for the southwest portion of the valley, and in what ways could you, and what things could you do to help implement that vision? We'll start with you, Tracy.
Again, you need input from your community. You're not going to meet anybody's needs if it's just the city council making the decision. You need outreach and input to decide what are the needs of the city. Right now, we've implemented Mountain View Corridor, but that's retail. Have we implemented any jobs? So we need to step back and actually ask the citizens and look what the Riverton City needs before we change any ordinances or do anything further for that.
Thank you. Troy?
So one of the biggest things, and this is an area where I applaud Mayor Staggs in stepping out, because so often, cities have been acting independently, be it South Jordan, Harriman, Riverton, acting in their individual interests, not recognizing that the decisions they make are impacting us. And Mayor Staggs has kind of led that charge of getting the mayors together to start communicating and talking amongst ourselves. So for example, if Harriman is going to build a high-density development, we're going to be the ones impacted on the roads with that. Now, those road funds are coming from various sources. Some of them are shared roads that we share with South Jordan or Harriman. Some are going to be UDOT-funded roads. And so there's got to be communication and coordination between all the different entities. So as we look at the southwest valley, one of the major issues that's got to be done with is going to be transportation. As other cities develop, how is it going to impact us transportation-wise? Commercial. Many of you, if you're familiar with West Jordan, West Valley, those areas, you remember areas that were once strong, vibrant economic areas, that then cities went into competition for the commercial pie, and suddenly those areas got jumped over and became dilapidated. So that's one of the major things, I think, those kinds of ideas that we need in the southwest study, is we've got to get the mayors in all the area talking together and coordinating, whether it be development, whether it be commercial, whether it be transportation, how one decision is affecting another city so that we're all on the same page. And this will also involve the county to a large degree, because some of these roads and issues are decisions that they're involved in making.
Thank you. Claude?
That is such a tough subject. It's not something that we deal with much on the municipal level, but Trent Staggs and the other mayors around here have done a good job in getting together and talking about what their concerns are. I'm already concerned about what's happening out west. You know, we don't have enough infrastructure out there as it is. And unfortunately, we take care of our business here, and we do a general plan, and we think about these things. We put the budget ahead. For the first time, we've gone from $900,000 in road budget to $1,200,000, all because the leaders thought about where the tax revenue was going to come from, the sales tax revenue. So Mountain View Village, we're into, they just started phase two. That's going to continue to give us money, tax revenue that we need, to be able to put in the infrastructure we need. But what really worries me is some of the other cities around us, like Harriman, they're already behind that curve. You know, they're building so fast, they're not worried about infrastructure, they're more worried about development. And so the only thing that we can really do, because everything has to run through our city, we're doing a really good job in managing our growth and putting together a general plan so we know what we're going to do, we know where that money is going to go when we have more revenue to fix our roads. So the only thing we can do at this point, because we may not be able to stop it, is to try to influence it. So the best thing we can do is when we have our own city leaders that are reaching out to the other leaders to say, hey, look, where's the water going to come from? What are we going to do when we don't have a way to get out? You look at what happened in Harriman a couple of years ago with that fire. If you look at how much development there's been there since then, these guys are already in trouble, because they don't have enough economic development that's going to support their infrastructure.
Thank you, Claude. Stephen?
Yeah, this is a mouthful. This has a lot of moving components with it. So it's not something you can just put your finger on and say, this is how we're going to fix it. When we're talking about transportation, we're talking about how we're going to get from point A, i.e. I-15 Clear West, and how we're going to do that. Keep in mind that Riverton City doesn't own 12600, nor do we own Redwood Road and other roads. That's owned by the state of Utah. So we're subject to kind of their whim. The best thing we can do is continue to communicate with them, keep track of what we're doing, and try to understand when they want to put different things in there, how can we build up businesses around that? How can we make sure that there's parking lots when they're going to have tracks or busing services, whatever they choose to do down 126? How are we going to, how is those locations going to affect our residents and their property value? Not one of us in this room bought our residence and said, I really hope I lose equity in my home. Not one of us has ever said that, and we're not going to say that. But what happens is, is when you have, when you buy your property on these roads and they're developed, it becomes a problem, because now what happens is that someone says, nah, I don't want to buy your house when you have it for sale. And so your home sits there, and then you have to take lesser of it. And that's something that we have to watch for as Riverton City and the council, when we're putting different businesses in. We need to do better at bringing in businesses, supporting them, bringing them in and retaining them, and making sure that they make it, that we're not opening one day and closing the next, because that doesn't help us. That just drags it down. That's why we have empty businesses throughout the city that we should do a better job at trying to retain. Retain those businesses and make sure that they have a good business front before we approve them to be here in the first place. We got to make sure they can sustain and bring us what we need, the tax revenue and so forth. Obviously, retail support, Tracy touched slightly on it, about retaining these businesses but bringing in work so we don't have to outsource our residents for jobs outside of that. It would be nice to have some more businesses that would employ more people so we don't have to travel so much. And that, I think, is the coordination that Claude touched slightly on, and bringing those things together for the Riverton City with the city council. Okay.
You're good. You're going to get a chance to bring some more of this come up. So let's jump into transportation. Some of you talked a little bit about transportation. As we continue to grow and we add more and more residents in this corner of the valley and in Riverton City in particular, transportation will become more and more of an issue. What would you like to see change in our current transportation, or what changes would you like to see as we go forward? And we'll start with you, Stephen.
All right. So I did touch slightly a bit on a minute ago, and the big topic of discussion, obviously, in Riverton, when I've knocked on many, many doors, is people ask of where we're going with 12600. Is light rail coming down that road? Tracks going to come down that road? Busing services? How we're going to move back and forth? How are we going to get all those residents that live in the far western Harriman and others? How are they going to come through our city and what we're going to do with that in the transportation? I obviously support some form of mass transit that has to go on that road, so we have to kind of be ready. So we have to kind of be ready for that. They're going to do it whether we want it or not. So the reality is that we need to learn to manage it and work within it and making sure that we're getting the best bang for our dollars there. We have to protect the residents on that road. My aunt lives on the road, has lived there for 50 years. They've done eminent domain on her twice since she's been here. So she intimately knows what that means to lose out on some of that stuff. So I get I get an earful from her and she and her concerns that come with that, and that's important. What I'd like to say is that we do the the transportation concept, we need to be better at, you know, ride-share programs and things of this nature, whether we're whether we're linking up with UTA or our own website or supporting those type of concepts. I think that's important.
Thank you. Claude?
So I actually stopped at a bus stop today and actually talked to a resident. And when I jumped on that bus, I was the third person at 9:30 in the morning. So we have what we have in Riverton City, we have really flex buses. They're the smaller buses that are also equipped to handle handicapped individuals. The one thing that's good about that flex system is that it'll actually go, if you set it up in advance, within three-quarters a mile off the route and pick up somebody in a wheelchair. They have to be out at the curb and they'll help them get on Flex. That's a really good service. What I noticed going west is one thing we are going to have to do is we expand. Ridership is really down. I mean, if you look at our current system, you can go to Riverton Hospital, you can go to the Kari Sioux Hamilton School, you can go to the LDS business offices that are in Riverton. And there's you can go down 134th, you can go down 126th. But one thing we will have to expand is we don't have anything that takes us out to Mountain View yet. But that is in the plans. That'll happen as that gets developed. But I don't believe we need to run our mass transit down 126 and clog that road. Just like Steve said, we may not get a say in it. But I do know that the city is opposed to it. I think with some of the other prison moves and things like that with Bluffdale growing, I think there's other ways we may be able to connect around maybe by the Port of Rockwell Mountain View Corridor and get to Mountain View. And then all that will connect up either in Draper to the track system there, or it also goes to the U of U Hospital that's over there in the in Daybreak. So there's there's some pretty good options out there now for the growth that we are in now, but we need to look at it for future to see what we need to do.
Troy?
All right. So adamantly against 126 South Light Rail, if we're going to do transportation, we need to be careful to not make the mistakes of other areas. The numbers right now with the Daybreak Station and the station over here in Draper do not support that we could handle a light rail rail system here at all. And in fact, it would add more traffic problems to a road that's already existing. Everyone scrambles for ideas, you know? People have talked about flex lanes. If you talk to the people who live in that community, it's been horrible. People don't get it. If you talk to the police chief, they have an increase in traffic accidents on those roads because they just don't understand how they're shifting. So we've got to be careful when making decisions that we don't add greater problems to an existing issue. Now, one of the things we can do about transportation, and the city's been moving in this direction right now, is to get our existing roads on a maintenance schedule cycle. It will save us money because instead of waiting for roads to go to a failure state, we can make sure they're in constantly good repair by having them slurry-coated and taken care of in advance. We have budgetary money set aside so we'll get better bidding pricing and we're able to build when the weather season opens. Most people aren't aware that we have a very short window for roads to be repaired. We've got to keep our roads repaired because as the city is moving forward, for example, Dan McKay did a great job along with the mayor in getting the 126 South Van Guder Interchange moved up on the timeline three years, which is going to get us ahead of a transportation problems, but that's going to create problems in the short term. So we need to make sure our existing roads are not always being under construction while we're having these kinds of things. So those are things we can practically do to take care of our existing roads and make sure that they're managed and taken care of now. Working our tax dollars come from the county and from the state for transportation. So we're going to have to work with them.
Thank you, Troy. Tracy?
Our traffic problem is already here. We're, as the mayor said, we're way behind. We actually, I think, need to be a little bit more innovative of how we can handle it. I know people are researching smart intersections and learning more about how to get data of how people commute. I know I've read and researched about how people are actually using it. And they say Uber and Lyft are actually pushing out public transportations in some areas that people downtown don't even use the public transportations anymore. So I think we need to be a little bit more innovative in what we're thinking of how people actually use it. We need to explore more about explore more options in the city center, how they control the operations. So right now, UDOT controls our signals. And maybe we should explore bringing that back in and having actual operations within our city so we can control it and flex it towards what we need.
Thank you. Next question. One of the responsibilities of the city council is approving the city budget. Can you give me one proposal that you might have in either increasing a revenue or decreasing the expense of the city? And we'll start with you, Tracy.
Increasing a revenue or decreasing a, let's see, I would I noticed that our budget actually goes from a year-to-year budget and we spend or lose policy or our policies as the physical year approaches, maybe we consider the length of it. So right now, our city actually reviews it and it's a lose it or use it is my understanding. And maybe we can actually look to extend that a little more little bit more.
So the example outside is just what I was beginning to talk about earlier. A great example is in the road area. By putting us on a maintenance cycle, because the budget closes out the end of June, we've got to be able to get ahead. If we can set aside transportation dollars in advance, when we go bid for our road work in November, December, we'll get better pricing, which will drop our overall costs for road construction. Then when the weather breaks in April, we're able to move ahead immediately because we already have the funds set aside that we can comfortably bid. Because if we're waiting to bid later on, we end up getting higher pricing in our bid because we're last minute and we're not able to move as quickly on construction of the roads. So it's a simple thing, but what it will do is save us money by extending the life of our roads, but at the same time, save us cost by being able to bid ahead of the curve. So it's just simply setting aside the funds in advance to handle expenditures that we know we're going to have to deal with down the road.
Thank you. Claude?
So I believe as far as the budget process, that's already being done. You know, you look at when we get these extra funds, one of the first priorities, I understand, is going to be 3600 West and 40th West because they're very they're two very well-traveled roads that are not taken care of by UDOT. And so these things aren't really done last minute. Last I heard, there were over 26 projects as of about a month and a half ago. And I've been able to keep up on some of those projects and see see them happen and follow up on it. It doesn't happen overnight. Now, these are all things that have to be done in advance. Sometimes a hard winter might speed something up, but I believe that that's being done responsible now. And so we just have to continue, I think, on those lines. But I think as far as increasing the budget, some of that's going to be maybe putting off things that maybe we don't need to do that year and have that money left over for next year unless we have to use it. But there's always plenty of places to use it. There are so many places of people that want to have sidewalks, some people don't want to have sidewalks. Sometimes you have drainage issues. There's things that come up because of weather cycles. So some of it can't be planned, but for the most part, the dollars are planned in advance because they have to be, because they have to come from somewhere. As far as increasing it, we have to continue to bring in economic development in the right areas that give us good sales tax dollars because that's how we grow our revenue and keep up with our aging infrastructure.
Thank you. Steven?
Okay. So when the city sits down and you have your department heads and they get down there and they sit with the city council and their mayor and they say, these are the dollars we want for our departments, and this is our wish list, and we try to put together the money for them to do that. Some of the tricks that you have to do when you when you're going to contract negotiation is knowing when to spend that money and when not to. It's almost like playing a game of poker. Because a lot of times, you will sit there when it comes to the state bid for vehicles, for instance, if you wait until December. The dealers who have the excess cars will offer at a cheaper rate, you can get them. And that's when we need to buy them. And we know we need so many things, we need to watch for that. And some of the stuff we can't, but some of the stuff we can. As we continue with the police department, we have to make predictions where we're going, how often we turn over our cars, how often we turn over the computers, how often we turn over the emergency equipment in those vehicles. We have to anticipate that in advance and watch and see those vendors because they will offer sales prices and we need to jump on that when it's there. But we have to have the money ready to go when it's there.
Thank you, Steven. We're going to go to the next question here. A year ago, Riverton officials voted to leave UPD and create its own police department. Just recently, city staff has instructed has instructed by elected officials to do a feasibility study on the financial future of Unified Fire and its cost benefit for the residents of Riverton. What specifically would you like to see happen with the city's relationship with Unified Fire?
Having worked for 20 years for Salt Lake County, I have some insight on where this goes. And part of the problem is is they have a very old process in how they're bidding this out and what we're doing and how they're getting our money from us. I was so fortunate to pay my taxes today, all 5,500 bucks of it. I had to send that check off. So I understand what it costs. And if you look on that, you'll see that the Unified Fire Services fee and you'll see Riverton has kept the law enforcement fee on there. And that's to kind of keep things in balance. And where Unified's going, they have a very old-fashioned way of billing us and we're not keeping track of it. We're letting them dictate when they buy fire trucks, how they put in fire stations. That was an article Sheldon Stewart put it was quoted in it, that they want to build more fire stations and we don't have control over where they put them and then where they want us to pay the bill. So that's that's quite concerning, all right? We need to we're funding Riverton. We shouldn't be funding everybody else. We have to be able to make sure that they have enough money to stay solid and solid in there, but we have to teach them to control those fees and we have to we have to control that. So my idea is to come to the table and ask them, they need to strengthen that. They need to know where we're coming from and when we're doing that and how we want them to do that. They shouldn't control how we spend our money.
Thank you. Claude?
So I had a chance, of course, last week to actually, you know, visit all three of our stations that are in Riverton. And all three of them have their own specialties, you know, whether it be hazmat, wildfire, ambulance services. Everybody has to have hazmat at a certain level. And I'll tell you what, I walked away pretty impressed. The thing that people have to understand, it really isn't the service through UFA that's the issue. I think we're in very good hands, at least I felt like we were. It's the service area that's the issue. And that's something we probably have to negotiate. If you look at it, the way that they do the the service areas, and the same thing was with the police department, and this is what kind of caused the problem and where the the change came about, is that we pay more than our fair share. If you look at our three fire stations, all the equipment's been paid for for quite some time. So we shouldn't be paying the same fee as, let's say, a new one that might be out in Harriman or Bluffdale or somewhere else they build. So I don't think the problem itself is with the service that we're getting. It's what we're paying. We're it's it's really an imbalance that we're paying more than our fair share, but yet our equipment is paid for and has been very well managed.
Thanks, Claude. Troy?
So Claude did a great job, I think, explaining the services are in great shape. This is a financial issue. The problem is going to be is the areas of growth that are going to have higher demand are going to be Bluffdale, Harriman, and those areas where they're going to need the additional services. And as long as the payment process is disproportionate like it was with the police department, we can expect higher costs, but we will not get those services within our city limits. So I think it's something we definitely need to look at. Now, one of the strengths is we sent a clear message by moving the policeman department in-house in that we're going to do what is best for Riverton financially. And and that was a great message to send. The only concern I have moving forward is the numbers. We've made a lot of changes in the city and I want to make sure that we can first afford the changes that we've currently made, like covering the cost of the police department and like covering these other things, before we bite off more expenditures without knowing for sure that we have the cost ability to pay for them. So that's just a matter of getting into the numbers and crunching them. Because we've got to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation where taxes are going to go up more than we have right now because we have so many things that we're doing. So my concern is just being a little cautious and make sure the numbers are there.
Tracy?
I agree with pretty much everything was has been said. I think we do have to do our due diligence and make sure that we are appropriately being spending. I know the reason why Sheldon actually asked it to be looked into is because he thought we would be burdened over the next 25, 30 years of building other firehouses. But we also need to take in what does it take to fund a fire? And you've got retirement, you've got an overhead in retirement and your pensions, you've got fees to burden. So I think we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we aren't paying for something or being burdened with more than what we need. We also need to be cautious if we're going to move forward.
Thank you. I had one question from the audience, from a Riverton resident. And it's kind of a combination of three questions. And I'm going to ask it and then allow you to answer the way you feel most appropriate. And it talks about campaign finance. So the question is that I'm asking you is how much have you spent on your campaign? Where did your money come from, just in general? And then can you explain to the audience why you decided to spend that amount of money? Not necessarily where you spent it or how you spent it, but what justifies spending that amount of money? Tracy, can we start with you?
I think I've spent around $4,000. Kind of what dictates how you spend it is trying to get your name out there, trying to inform people of who you are and what you stand for so you can they can be making an educated voter decision. A lot of my money came from my friends and my family. They knew that I really care about our city and that I'm really running for the people and for the citizens. And they wanted to support me. So that's about how much I ran.
Troy?
So I think right now, I'm about $2,000 I've spent, and that's largely just campaign signs and brochure and a little bit on the parade for some candy. My funding source is a wide variety of different people, citizens, as well as other people. Frankly, I'm a school teacher. I think that's one of the hardest things is there's many good people who could run but just don't have the money to get their name out there like Tracy was saying. So, you know, I've had to rely on other people's generosity to help me get my name out there. Most of what I've had to do, though, is my six kids running flyers door-to-door and me banging on doors to get my name out there. And so that's allowed me to keep my costs a little less. Regardless of where money comes from, the question is, just because someone gives you money doesn't mean you're automatically going to represent them. I'm here to represent Riverton citizens. And so, you know, I've had people outside the area who've given me money and regardless, I'm going to stand by my integrity and represent the people.
Claude?
I probably have to defer that question to my campaign manager, which is our my accountant wife. But I think it's been somewhere around around about $13,000. The reason ours is so much is that we've never done this before. We brought probably way too many signs, but we want to do some very professional brochures, which we designed ourself. We want to do a website. Not every candidate did a website because that is the place that the website will go into well past the campaign. It's a place where people could get on there now and find out who we are. We spent a lot of money on brochures, door hangers, but yet we still delivered every one of them ourself. Nobody Nobody else delivered them. It was either me by myself or my wife because I wanted to walk every street and be at every door. So we decided to do it right. And do it right meant for us, we were at town days. Some people weren't at town days. We were at the business fairs. We were at the parade. We bought 9,000 pieces of candy and didn't think we'd run out, run out before we hit 128 South. We bought magnetic signs for probably five vehicles and some that weren't our own. You know, we decided if we were going to do this, one, we were going to do it by ourself. I actually had a check that came in the mail after doing an interview and I won't say who it was from because I returned it with a nice little letter that just said, "Thank you, we decided to do this ourself. It was important enough to us that not everybody can do that themselves." But we decided that I didn't want it to come back later, that I took it from this group, but I didn't take it from that group. So I had friends even outside of Riverton that offered, said, "You know what, Claude? I believe in you." I had people within Riverton that would get nothing out of it. They were in positions that they didn't need to. But I just didn't want to have anything that would appear to be a conflict of interest. So that's why we spent what we did. We wanted to do everything right.
Great. Thank you. Stephen?
I would have to, this is a guess, but I think I'm somewhere just about $4,000 to the date. It's all self-funded. I believe that's important that we keep our integrity on this side of it. That's why I've done this so far, my own. Like most people indicated, the flyers, the mailers, campaign signs and other things are really cost, is a little bit of candy, of course, like everybody else. I guess that the bottom line is, is that when we're spending this kind of money for this type of position, you have to ask yourself, what's the limit? Where do we go with this? And if you're willing to spend that kind of money, what else are you willing to do? I think the reality is, is that we're showing fiscal responsibility on our own selves here by keeping a lid on the situation. And by keeping your campaign funding to a reasonable amount shows that you'll be responsible if you sit on that bench behind us there with your money. So being responsible with my money is meaning being responsible with your money.
All right. Thank you. So we have seven minutes left. And what I would like to do now is give each of you just a minute and a half for just a closing remark. And we'll start with you, Stephen.
Okay. First again, thank you so much, everybody, for allowing us the opportunity to come out here and speak tonight and tell you what our thoughts are and what we hope to achieve before elected. This has been pleasurable and it's been torment. I think we all agree with that. I'm very fortunate to be running off against Claude. He's been a gentleman throughout that and I appreciate that and I thank you for that. I hope that tonight, that you all received some kind of insight where we're going and what we want to be and what we want to do and how we want to get there. This has been my privilege to be here. It's been my privilege, if elected, to be your city councilman.
Thank you. Claude?
So I just want to again tell everybody, thank you for the support. We did have a primary. None of us had ran before. We did have the money to spend the money that we did. I don't think it was irresponsible. I have a website. My opponent does not. So I have a lot more places for people to communicate, to see where I am on the issues. That was really important to me because it isn't something, it's kind of like building for the future. You spend money now to save you money later, okay? I've got a website that's already up and running. I put stuff on it almost every day. I put city events. I put what's going on around us. And so some of this money that I've spent was not to run a campaign to get elected. It was to build the future for where I'm going to be. And I really care about the city. I think this is a great opportunity to run. Because I'm semi-retired, I can do this full-time. And that's why I'm able to go to things during the day that not every candidate can. I'm in a unique situation where I could finance my own campaign and we could spend the money that we did in doing positive things. So I don't make any excuses for what we spent. Has nothing to do with what I would do in the future on budget for the city. It has to do with what we wanted to do in our own campaign to get our name out there. Thank you.
Troy?
So I love where I live. I love being here in Riverton. And it's been a great experience for me and my family and I look forward to a lot of more years doing that. I'm getting involved because my experience in real estate taught me that cities go through a life cycle, growth, development, and change. And there's critical points where city issues can be dealt with, the plan for future events. And if good decisions are made at those critical points, a city can emerge very strong and vibrant for years to come. And I believe we're at that. Now, the issues and the things I'm concerned about aren't flashy. It's transportation. It's fiscal responsibility. It's making sure that we're in a position financially that should an economic downturn come, we can weather that without increasing costs on our individual citizens. So it's looking forward to what we want to be five, 10, 15 years from now. And those are the decisions that I'm concerned about. And so to me, it's good quality research, finding out what the citizens want and respecting the rights of existing citizens already in making those decisions so that they can enjoy that experience of living here in Riverton. I believe I have the experience and the research and the personal contacts, not just within the city, but within the county, within the cities and around the different areas where we can have those open communications, where we can have accessibility so that we make those critical decisions that will work for us. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Troy. Tracy?
I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to even run and for you to even come to see us and hear what we have to say. I'm running because of the people and me even not, I've been knocking, I've almost hit 2,000 doors by myself. And the residents that I run into and that I meet, it's been astonishing. And that's what makes our city so great. I've had people chase me down in a rainstorm to offer me shelter. It's been 100-degree weather and they're offering me and they're to get water. They're hugging me to say, "Thank you for even wanting to run and provide for our city and represent us." I even ran into my grandma's cousin that I didn't know lived here. So, and that was an interesting conversation because I didn't know him. But it's just our, we have long-term residents and I don't want to see us lose that value and our Riverton spirit. So I appreciate running and I hope I can earn your vote.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming and answering these questions. I know they're not easy. I know that you can prepare for this stuff and then the question seems a little bit different or it comes a little bit different. It's not the easiest task to get up in front of people and try to share views and know that the whole room is judging everything that you say. So I appreciate that and thank you for your willingness to serve your city in this way. I'll turn the time now back over to Greg with the chamber.
Yeah, just to wrap it up, we want to express our thanks to all the candidates for being here and especially for running for office. Appreciate that for a little man. Thank you for yourself as well in the future. Thank you, Riverton City, for hosting us here tonight. And I'm sure the candidates will stick around and look at that if we have any follow-up questions. Thank you again for being here and have a great night.